Hi, Bill.
Can you hear me?
Hi, Bill.
Sorry. Yeah, I can hear you, John. Thank you.
Okay, we are live.
Okay, at 6:30, we'll call the meeting to order for the regular City Council meeting for Monday, August 25th, 2025. Please rise for the pledge and remain standing for the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Heavenly Father, as we come together this evening, we ask for your guidance in our discussions and decision-making. Help us to work with integrity and compassion for the benefit of our community. Greta's wisdom and understanding as we thrive for the common good. May our efforts lead to a brighter future for Rochelle. And Lord, we also ask for your help in ending the hate in the world, fostering understanding and respect among all people, so that we all may learn to get along and realize that we are all one, and learn to support one another and stand united. Amen. Roll call when you're ready, Rose.
Counselor Artiega?
Here.
Counselor Valdivieso?
Here.
Counselor Dan McDermott?
Here.
Counselor Tom McDermott?
Here.
Counselor Shawdiki?
Here.
And Mayor Barros?
Here.
Okay, we'll move into our proclamations and commendations.
Do you want to make a motion to allow Councilman Hayes?
I'm sorry. Dan, you want to make that motion?
I move to allow Councilman Hayes to participate in the meeting remotely due to work conflict.
Pushed by Councilmember Dan McDermott, is there a second?
Second.
Second of a councilwoman, Rosie Artiega. Can we just do a voice vote? Roll call.
For the roll call, would I then? Can Counselor Artiega?
Yes.
Counselor Valdivieso?
Yes.
Counselor Dan McDermott?
Yes.
Counselor Tom McDermott?
Yes.
Counselor Shawdiki?
Yes.
And Mayor Barros?
Yes.
Motion carries 6 to 0.
Okay, now we'll move into proclamations and commendations. We have with us Lincoln Highway Heritage Festival Committee tonight. We'd just like to, on behalf of the entire City Council, thank all of you for all that you did to make an amazing weekend come together. We all know how it is when you have few hands doing a lot of work. And literally, you only have about eight or 10 of you that are on the committee, and I think that's amazing. At the band show the Friday night, when I made a remark about volunteers, I hope that people watching this and people that see this later on could step up and help them, because at some point, people get tired of doing the same thing for a lot of years, and we don't want to see this festival fall apart. But you folks did an amazing job. I mean, I heard nothing but good comments. So, on behalf of the City Council, we just want to thank you for all you did. Okay. Anybody else? Councilmembers? Rosie?
You said everything very nicely, but yes, I wanted to thank everybody on the committee. I sat with them for very little, and I watched them work, sweat, and sometimes it's very hard when few people do so many things for our community. But sometimes, it's easier to remember the negative versus all the positive. And it just looked amazing, and it was like a born-again festival at the park. So, once again, thank you very much for everything that you do.
Okay, the councilmembers.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to see if you could take a picture with them.
Oh, sure. You can do that.
Please.
Everybody?
Oh, whoever wants to be in the picture, yes. I love pictures.
At least the mayor.
That means you're going to make all of us.
They stand in front of us, and then we'll stand.
Oh, we could. We could just stand in here.
Yes.
So then it's two levels.
It's everyone.
Tommy?
Yeah.
We're trying to get in here.
If we stand, then everybody else is in the picture.
Slow down. I might need that.
Podium out there.
That's kind of worked out nice.
Yeah, we're all short people.
Short people in the back, it's making better pictures.
Short ear and a first, good idea.
Rosie, can you scoot to the left just a smidge?
Thank you.
One more. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
We appreciate the great job.
Thank you, Rosalyn. Thank you, everybody.
Ooh, I missed the chair. Once again, on behalf of the entire City Council, thanks to everyone. Next on our agenda is a swearing-in ceremony. Do you want to move that to the very end of the meeting? I'm kidding. Mine up, chief.
Better not have anything catch on.
That's pretty risky to say that with a room full of officers.
They handled it well.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, for allowing me to take a few minutes on supporting this promotion. Detective Benesky started with the Rochelle Police Department in 2008, where he was assigned to the Patrol Division. He's certified in truck enforcement. He's also a certified juvenile officer and a member of the Rochelle ERT team. While in patrol, he was awarded numerous awards for DUI enforcement. I was actually told right before I came in here, he won it in 2010, '11, '12, '15, '16, '17, '18, and '19. So, pretty good. He has a bachelor's degree in business management. In 2022, he was moved into Investigations, where he became certified in interview interrogations and is a lead homicide investigator. He's done a fantastic job in investigations. Let me just say, if you're going to commit a crime, this is not the guy you want coming after you, because he is, he's going to go the extra mile. He's going to turn over every stone. He's had a great job for us. I have all the faith in the world in him, and because of his, not only his patrol experience, his investigation experience, he will do a fantastic job for us as a sergeant, and all the confidence in the world in him. So, with that, Rose.
Please write him. I state your name.
I, Elvis Benesky.
Have been appointed?
Have been appointed.
To the office of Sergeant?
To the office of Sergeant.
In the city of Rochelle?
The city of Rochelle.
In the county of Ogilvy?
In the county of Ogilvy.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Sergeant?
The duties of Sergeant.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Once again, I will say that on behalf of the council, we, this community is very blessed to have the force that we have working in our police department. The results of what your hard work is, really shows well. So, we thank you all for that, and just pray that you all stay safe. Okay? Safe travels to you, too.
Highway Festival, if you want to make your break.
He's going back to get in the camper. Okay, well, any public comments? None? Under Reports and Communications, that kind of did mine. So, councilmembers, anything you'd like to add to comments? All right, we'll move into discussion items. Birth-to-Five Committee Presentation.
Thank you all for having me here tonight. I am Abby Hoskins. I am the Regional Council Manager for Birth-to-Five Illinois, Region 47, which covers Lee, Ogilvy, and Whiteside Counties. One of our major goals is to make sure that we're in every community within those three counties. So, I appreciate being here tonight to just share an update on what we've been working on. I will try to keep it brief, but you all have a packet with you tonight with my contact information and the documents. And if it's something you'd like to talk about afterwards, I'm always happy to have a conversation, as is our team. So, Birth-to-Five Illinois works in every community in the state to find out what families are not able to access when it comes to early childhood services. So, looking at a target range of zero to eight for children in our three counties. We also work to tell decision-makers about early childhood services, what local families say their children need to thrive as well. At a regional level, our role is to listen to families, to work with community levers, and then to elevate local needs to the state systems so that we can better support children zero to age five. We achieve this by working with the community through our Action and our Family Council. The Action Council is made up of community leaders from different sectors throughout the three counties. We have those that are working in early childhood directly, but then also making sure that we have cross-sector collaboration as well from people like our business community, the Chambers of Commerce, our faith community, mental and behavioral health, and so on. We also work with a family council that's made up of parents and caregivers in the region who are raising children eight and under. Happy to say that we have two parents that are from Rochelle, and one of them actually set up this meeting tonight. And then we also partner with the Sauk Valley Stars Early Childhood Collaboration, who is chaired out of the Regional Office of Education. So, over the last three years, we've completed several major milestones with input from our community members, families, and professionals. In 2022, we gathered data and stories through listening to the community and hearing from families about the barriers that they faced when it came to early childhood education and care. Then, in 2023, we worked to create a regional action plan with our family and our Action Councils. This action plan outlines community-driven recommendations to improve access, equity, and quality in early childhood systems. And then currently, we've been working over the last year and ongoing to implement those recommendations. So, what we heard from the community and what we can do at kind of that regional level to start making some changes, especially those centered on access to information and improving partnerships across sectors. So, to make the information easier for families, we heard that awareness was one of those top things that we could work to improve in our three counties. We worked with our councils, and we developed several resources that I'm excited to share here tonight. One of those was to increase community awareness of local early childhood resources, and the community has created and launched the OWL, Ogilvy, Whiteside, and Lee Early Childhood Hub. This is a website that features resources for families, providers, and community leaders in our region. It includes childcare tools, resource guides, helpful descriptions of programs, and a connection to coordinated intake, where a parent can be connected with a referral specialist at the Regional Office of Education if they need support. And then additionally, there's an OWL Early Childhood Facebook page, which is a platform to share timely information, events, and resources in a family-friendly way. We also heard from our community, parents, and then the business community, that we needed increased awareness and understanding of our childcare resources in our region. Our councils, along with 4C, our local childcare resource and referral agency, and four local chambers of commerce, came together to create the Region 47 Childcare Toolkit. This is a printed and digital toolkit that was created in partnership with the Chambers of Commerce with a goal to help employees and employers understand and access childcare. So, quickly tonight, I just wanted to highlight a few things. You all have in your packet flyers for this. On the left, you're going to see a flyer for the Early Childhood Resource Hub, OWL. In here, families can access this in a few different ways. They can utilize a QR code, or they can use the Bitly website. When they reach the Bitly website, they're going to be greeted with the actual OWL site themselves, the childcare toolkit, and the Facebook page that I spoke about. And then the childcare toolkit, while this is part of the OWL site, is also being distributed to businesses in our three counties, so that way they can use the tool with employees through orientation or just as a resource to their employees. This is also something that can be utilized through paper format, or it can be used digitally, connecting them with our resources in our community. Just very briefly, I just wanted to show, let's see if it'll open up, the website. The goal of this website is for parents to be able to access it. It should be broke down into a family-friendly format, and then in there, it's going to have different resources. So, I apologize, it's not loading. If you'd like to take, oh, there it is. When they're greeted here, it should be simple for them to access. There is the website, the Facebook page, and the toolkit. Resources in here should be easy to utilize for families, breaking down things like developmental screenings, accessing childcare, preschool programs, home visiting programs, developmental screenings. So, it looks like we're not loading, but you have those QR codes, and I encourage you all to visit those at another time. And then we are working on some continuous quality improvements on the site as well, so adding in things such as mental health, parent education components, and working on translating it to Spanish as well. So, moving forward, our goal is always to continue to build on the momentum, and we have a few key steps. We're working to increase communication with our community, also through our Action and Family Council, so we have interest forms open for the community. We want more voices included, especially parents and caregivers. These councils meet regularly and shape our work. We also will be focusing on mental and behavioral health for early childhood. So, one of our top priorities is building better access to the supports for children and families in the area, including local partnerships with healthcare providers, and then just continued community collaboration. So, having moments like this to talk to our community, share the message with the community as well, and then hearing feedback from community members like you is important, so that way we're all working to kind of build for our youngest residents. So, I thank you again for this opportunity. We'd love to collaborate with you and your networks. If you have the ability to share our resources, connect with family and community members, and then keep working towards a more equitable early childhood system in Region 47. Feel free to contact me. You can see on the screen, and then also in your packets, ways to connect through our website, our Facebook. We also have a newsletter that comes out bi-monthly that you can stay in touch and see the work going on in our region. And I'd like to open the floor for any questions.
Councilmembers, questions?
I do have a question. So, you still offer birth-to-five, like, in-home education?
So, we are actually a backbone agency, so we work with the community. So, in the OWL site, it will connect families with the agencies that do offer that. So, we've got four different home visiting programs in our region that offer zero-to-three programming for that early development. And then we also have childcare centers, preschool-for-all programs, such as here in the Rochelle School District. And then we also have Head Start programs that'll work with the three-to-five, and then childcare that kind of encompasses all of that for our working families that need care, but also offers some developmental services. So, when a family goes to that, it'll direct them. So, the OWL site is all resources that already existed, but putting them in one spot and breaking it down so families understand what they're looking at, and then they also can connect with that coordinated intake specialist if they need someone live to talk to.
Okay. So, basically, like, if I had a child, I go through the OWL services, and I connect with somebody that works for you, and that person will do, like, the intake and also find out, like, what my child needs, et cetera?
Yes. So, they'll be greeted with the little owl you saw on there on every page on the site, and parents can click that, and it'll connect them directly to an intake form or the phone number to the coordinated intake specialist at the Regional Office of Education, who will connect them with those additional services and see what they need. And they also use the IRIS platform, which is a referral system, to also help them with things beyond developmental services. So, maybe food insecurities or housing things and such.
You mentioned you had meetings. Where are the meetings?
We have two different meetings. We have an Action Council meeting that works collaboratively with the Sauk Valley Stars Coalition. The Action Council is made of parents, but then also the community stakeholders in the region. Those are held as a closed meeting with the Action Council, but then every year, interest forms can be filled out for family members. And then the Sauk Valley Stars meetings are open to community members who want to be involved in early childhood, and those take place bi-monthly on Tuesdays through Zoom at 9:00 a.m.
Okay.
And then Family Council meetings, we do those in the evening, so that way working families can be accommodated. In our region, they choose to do them on Zoom, because we're such a big region, spread out, so that way they can make sure they're meeting it, but it's in a family-friendly format.
Are you also a part of the non-for-profit group that meets quarterly here in Rochelle?
I do attend those meetings.
Okay.
With the Community Foundation.
Yep.
Yep. So, our goal is to be connecting any way we can, because everyone has a voice. We learned through working with the Chambers that it's not just preschool teachers, but the Chambers had a lot to say about how we're impacting the economy by not having childcare and such. So, having that kind of web of conversations has been really great, and attending meetings like the nonprofit meeting has been wonderful networking.
Okay. Questions, comments?
All right, I appreciate you all taking the time to listen tonight and connect with us if you have any other insight for us.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we have also been blessed and chosen to be on the 2025 calendar or the museum. And she is welcome to stay for the whole meeting, but I thought we better catch this before we make her sit too long and she leaves and changes her mind. So, if you want to come up, she wants to get a picture of all the councilmembers for the calendar and City Manager.
Oh, she wants me in there?
Absolutely.
Are we standing, or?
Why not?
Are we going to do it up here again?
Sure.
That'll be easier for you.
Yeah, it's actually the 2026 calendar called Evil of Rochelle, and kind of connects with the idea of the 250th anniversary. So, it's all about
2025.
What Rochelle is like in 2026. Okay. And you can be serious, or silly, or whatever. Oh, that's a very serious look, I must say. Is there any way we could form more of a pyramid-ish look?
Pyramid-ish.
A pyramid-ish look?
All right, get down on your knees, Tom.
Oh, are we two?
Oh, you want some people out front?
Well, sure.
You're talking in front of the dice, that's what I'm.
I got a cane, I can make it. Let's go. Yeah, coming.
Now you're going to make it uneven.
Now we got to balance it.
I appreciate your cooperating here, and I. Oh, that's a good look, Ben.
Look, anything's a picture. Cooperating to me.
Tallest guy in the group in front. Just stand up on one of the chairs. You want us all down there?
I don't know.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Well, because now I'm, you know, it's.
That's okay. Just tell us how you want us to move. Do we need to spread out so you can see us?
I think it might be better if everyone came down here, and we had the taller people in the back and shorter people standing in front. Thank you, Jenny.
Yeah. We don't have any short people.
No, you don't have any short people.
And you have the colorful.
Don't hit me with my cane.
All right, I'm going to do another one here. One more. You know, good old camera. Great. And if it's not any good, I'll let you know.
That's a whole lot of photos in one night. I did not come prepared for that.
I build a couple.
February, they got a lot of.
Well, probably, you guys probably want election month, right?
No, it's not an election year.
Not?
No, nobody gets elected this year.
But thank you, Charles.
Good idea.
Fourth of July?
Yeah, for the 250th birthday of our great country.
I love that.
It was Rosie's idea.
Rosie. Wish I'd have said something good about you.
Perfect.
Thank you again. All right. Rose, would you like to read the consent agenda items, please?
A, approve city council meeting minutes, August 11th, 2025. B, approve check registers, August 6th through August 11th, or August 6th and August 11th and August 18th of 2025. C, approve payroll, or July 21st through August 3rd, 2025. D, approve special event request, Kiwanis Peanut Day. Are there any items you wish to remove?
Councilmembers, good with that? If so, I'll entertain a motion.
I move.
Go ahead.
I move consent agenda items, A through D, be approved by omnibus vote, as recommended.
I'm sorry, motion by Councilmember Tom McDermott. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Dan McDermott. Roll call when you're ready, Rose.
Counselor Shawdiki?
Yes.
Counselor Artiega?
Yes.
Counselor Valdivieso?
Yes.
Counselor Hayes?
Yes.
Counselor Dan McDermott?
Yes.
Counselor Tom McDermott?
Yes.
And Mayor Barros?
Yes.
Motion carries by vote 7 to 0.
Okay, next, I'll entertain a motion relative to the sale of property.
I move ordinance 2025-53, an ordinance authorizing the sale of 1414 Pickwick Drive, be approved.
Pushed by Councilmember Ben Valdivieso, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Tom McDermott. Jeff?
Thank you, Your Honor. In July, the City Council authorized the City Manager to issue a request for proposals for the sale of surplus city-owned property located at 1414 Pickwick Drive with a parcel number known as 24-14-479-008. The parcel is approximately 0.29 acres, plus or minus in size, and is zoned R1. Single-family residential, the city authorized appraisal value, the city authorized appraisal valued the property at approximately $25,000. Because the city conducted a public RFP process advertised, both online and the local newspaper, there were no requirements that the property be sold for the 80% of the appraised value. The city received one proposal submitted by Jason and Aaron Harper, who reside at the adjacent property. Their bid is $6,000, and their stated intent is to use the lot as additional outdoor space for their family. The Harpers have acknowledged and accepted all restrictions on the property and have provided proof of funds. So, if approved, closing will occur within 45 days of tonight. Proceeds from the sale will be directed back into the Electric Fund, which is the electric department owning the property.
Questions?
Just, I've had a couple of folks ask, you know, can they put a fence up? They'll have to combine the lots, because a fence is technically an accessory use, and an accessory use is not allowed on a lot without a primary use. So, to fence it, they would have to put in, they would have to combine the lots into one lot. And it's technically has two front yards, so the setbacks would be more significant. I don't know off the top of my head what the setback would be. It'd probably be at least 30 feet. So, I don't know if they're going to fence it or not, but if they do, they'll have to go, come back and combine the lots to do that.
And there probably would be a pretty good corner setback on that corner, too.
Yeah, at least 30 feet off the
Yeah.
Off the parquet.
Okay. Anybody else? Comments? Okay. Anybody else? Comments? Motion on the floor to accept the bid price of $6,000. We have a first and a second. Roll call when you're ready, Rose.
Councilor Dan McDermott?
Yes.
Councilor Tom McDermott?
Yes.
Councilor Shodiki?
Yes.
Councilor Artiega?
Yes.
Councilor Valdivieso?
Yes.
Councilor Hayes?
Yes.
And Mayor Barros?
Yes.
Motion carries by vote 7-0.
All right, next, we'll have a motion regarding the Rochelle Strategic Communications Plan.
I move the council, I move the councils to adopt the city of Rochelle Strategic Communications Plan.
Motion by council member Dan McDermott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Rosie Artiega. Jenny, you're up.
Okay, so I'm here to present the communications plan for the city of Rochelle going forward. So just a little history of how this came about. In 2024, I was accepted into the Texas Christian University Certified Public Communicator Program. This is basically the gold standard program for communicators in my field who work in local governments, in law enforcement, in water districts, in counties, in schools, et cetera. So this is my graduating cohort right here. We've been working together for almost two years now. This is a 95-hour graduate-level program. It's nationally recognized. The application process is competitive, and the output of this program is a communications plan for your organization. We also did, let's see, three weeks of sessions, whether they were in person or online. And those topics included data analysis, listening, and metric gathering from our community, crisis communication, social media policy, leadership, and artificial intelligence. So we've touched on a whole lot of communications-related topics. Just so you have a picture of where we are today. So this is the city of Rochelle's communication structure right now. Communications is a key function of the city manager's office. Our mission is to provide accurate and timely information to Rochelle's residents and stakeholders, and that includes our business owners, the people who work here, and who travel to Rochelle every day. As Director of Community Engagement, I also serve as the Assistant to the City Manager and oversee the customer-facing departments of the City Clerk's Office, Utility Billing, the golf course, and the railroad park. We have an informal communications team in the organization that we're hoping to grow and make more formal this coming year. That includes members of the police and fire departments, utility billing office, H.R., water rec, the city clerk, and the golf course. So all of these individuals who have been helping with communications, they serve as my backup when I take a day off. They all are using our social media accounts for different departments. They are making graphics. They are representing the city at different community events. They provide lots of ideas, and they're also sort of my eyes and ears to say, hey, we're getting calls about this. I think we should do some PR around this. So I'm so thrilled that we have these people who have been gracious enough to do this on top of the normal duties that they have. So here are all of the functions of the communications department. So I divided them into all the various categories. So first up is content creation, and this includes all of the graphics that you see on our Facebook page, on our websites, all the photo and video, our branding, managing the logos and the different formats, all of our social media, our websites, our two newsletters, internal and external, any flyers that you see for different community events, or any city services that we're putting out. We also do community engagement, which includes the speaking that we do at different service groups. Some of you are involved in all of that, booths at different events. We had one just earlier this summer. It was a family fun night in the park, and we were, had police department, fire department, and utility billing representation all at this event. So we are very well represented and engaging with our community. We do informational sessions for small business that Councilor Artiega has been really involved with getting set up and organized over the past couple of years. We have our municipal band concerts, and we work very closely with the Chamber of Commerce, the schools, and the Park District to share one another's messages. We put on a number of events. So Rochelle has a lot of events. When you see our annual event calendar, there are a lot of events. But the ones listed here are the ones that are actually planned by the city of Rochelle. So we have Railroad Days that happens down at the Railroad Park as the first event of the year. The Fourth of July, movie in the park, the fly-in drive-in that we put on this year, National Night Out, the Hayvale Trail that will happen later this fall, and the Christmas Walk. We engage in public relations, so we put out all of the press releases for the organization. We do a lot of media relations where we're just answering questions. Jeff does interviews with the paper, which, by the way, we're so thankful to have back in the room. So, and we do a lot of citizen communication and customer service through a lot of our social media channels. Our internal communications, to kind of switch gears a little bit, includes new this year, our internal newsletter. I'm sure you've all seen that. It comes out in the all-email users list. So it goes to every single employee and council member. It has a report from every single department each month. We do e-blasts of important activities that are happening, information that employees need to know, whether it's H.R.-related or policy-related. We added the screens in departments over the last couple of years, similar to the TV screens that you see here. That was a result of some feedback that we received from an employee survey that we did. And we have a lot of non-desk employees, so they're not looking at their email all day. They're out in the field working, and they're just popping back in for their breaks or their lunch. And so that was a great way for us to communicate information out to those public works and utilities departments, the public safety departments that don't utilize a computer on a day-to-day basis. Surveys, we've been doing some surveying of our staff. Our H.R. department takes on the onboarding process of all new employees, kind of sharing our mission and our culture with them on their very first couple of days in the job, and sharing out any other policies, procedures, changes in the organization. We also have crisis communication. So I serve as the city's public information officer in the event of a crisis that includes press releases, sharing information during high-impact weather events, and organizing press conferences. I just want to note that being the public information officer doesn't necessarily mean that I am the one who is speaking in a press conference. Generally, that is going to be the subject matter expert, the police chief, the fire chief, the mayor. Those roles will be the speaking roles, and the P.I.O. kind of is the organizer of the whole situation. And then, like I mentioned before, the departments and projects, and that includes communications and any special projects. Like I have some, the pickleball courts that we're planning for next year, or working with the Tyler software, there are always some special projects that don't necessarily fit, and they usually come to me. So these are all the different channels that we use for communications. We have our external channels. That includes all of the traditional channels, like our newsletter, the news media. We have a number of websites that we keep up to date. We have all of our internal channels. One I haven't mentioned is the Employee Self-Serve, which is sort of an internet where employees can access any kind of their payroll information. They can make changes. They can access information about their benefits, different forms and things that they need. It's all in one place on a website that they can go home and access when they're with their spouse, going through, making some of those decisions. And then all the way to the right, you can see all of our different social media accounts. And this is really where that communications team comes in, because this is a lot of accounts, and one person certainly cannot manage all of that. So this is where those groups really, really shine. So as part of this process, I came up with three strategic communications goals. And those goals are related to external, internal, and crisis communications. So first up will be the external communication. And so our goal is to establish the city of Rochelle as the primary source for stakeholders to obtain information related to local government, departments, and services. So we want to be where people go first when they're looking for any information about the city of Rochelle. So I started this process with a SWOT analysis early last year and got great feedback about our social media presence, our digital presence, our websites are up to date. We are really quick with our responses on social media. Like I mentioned, we do a ton of customer service on our social media. We have a lot of subscribers to our text alerts, so we're very strong in that area. Some areas where we have room to grow is reaching the population of people who don't have social media. That's always a tough group. So it's, it's got to be through, whether they're listening to the radio, the newspaper, or we need to do some direct mail to get information straight to them. We actually did that a couple of years ago, a few years ago, I guess now, when we did the garbage can rollout. We sent out to every single resident because we couldn't take the chance of someone not having seen it on Facebook or not having seen it in the paper, so we had to send directly to all the residents. So keeping those sort of tools in our back pocket to make sure that we're reaching the people that we need to reach. Another item that we can certainly improve on, and I think we have improved on, but there is always room for growth, is improving our bilingual communication. We do a lot of translation of our graphics and our posts on social media, but of course, we can always do more of that. So first up, these are the tactics now that go along with these goals. And I just want to say that, don't be alarmed and think we're going to do a bunch of new things. Really, very little of this is new. Most of this is documenting what we're already doing. So when I win the lottery, I can sail off into the sunset, and the next person who comes in can say, what's the plan? What are we doing? And you can hand them this and say, here you go. Start, start doing this. So this is a lot of documenting what's already happening. Promoting our services through our annual content calendar. This is something that we already do, but it could be stronger. We could do some more promotion of different departments. I mentioned growing our internal communications team, and I'm hopeful that as we bring more of our departments into the fold in that team, we'll have more opportunities to communicate things that they have going on in their departments. Creating a more robust monthly newsletter that includes construction updates and Ask Us Anything, which, we started this earlier this year. I probably get three or four Ask Us Anything questions in every edition of the newsletter. I'm also seeing a lot of people who are forwarding the newsletter. I get a lot of analytics on the back end of what happens after I hit send. In fact, today I just got an email that said we gained 15 more subscribers. So our, people are reading the newsletter, they're passing it on, and then those people are subscribing, which is awesome and exactly what we want to happen. Another opportunity for us is to continue creating educational opportunities. This includes the, I'd like to call it All Rochelle You, just because I like that catchy name, but a new topic each month. Some months, it can be small business development, like we've been doing with Rosie. Some months, it can be more Citizens Academy-focused, where you wouldn't necessarily have to sign up for a whole four-week or eight-week commitment to join Citizens Academy, but maybe you're really interested in the electric department, and you could spend a few hours there, learning about what they do and seeing the demonstrations and things that that staff can offer. So some different ideas to kind of enhance what we're already doing. And then take that content and create social media content and newsletter content. So we're already putting on the sessions. We're already putting on the Citizens Academy nights. Then taking that information and putting it out for the public. We got some great feedback during one of the small business sessions from people who said, hey, I couldn't make it to that. Could you post it online? And so that's something we can do. We have, obviously, we're streaming this meeting. We can stream a small business training that we do here in the council chambers, or we could record it and be able to share it for another time. We've even done some of that on the internal side for shift employees who aren't able to attend an all-staff meeting or a training during the day, where we are recording it and having it available for them at another time. And then the third, and maybe most exciting, is fostering a sense of pride by taking our city color from red to purple. This includes updating our style guide to include purple, updating our digital marketing, and eventually updating our wayfinding signage and the city hall sign to incorporate purple. This is something that we've heard from the community for the last 10 years. It was very loud, especially when we did the water tower painting. People were thrilled with the idea that not only did we ask for their feedback and their input on what the tower should look like, we took that feedback and we followed through with it. So we hear you. We're ready. We're going to make this change and start moving in that direction. Just know it will take some time because it costs, there are some costs involved, and so we'll have to budget for that accordingly over the next couple of years. So our second goal is related to internal communication. So our goal here is just to communicate uniformly and consistently across all of the city departments. We did, again, survey our employees to do the SWOT analysis. We got some great feedback from the new screens that we put up in all of the department buildings, on our ESS internet, and the fact that our H.R. team is very accessible. Some of our weaknesses, of course, are the fact that we're spread out amongst a lot of different buildings, and getting messages out to everybody at the same time in the same format sometimes is a struggle. So we've, we've got some opportunities, and we can do more with some of the platforms that we have. We have some text alert capabilities that we can do just for employees. We may have the ability to grow some of our software, to be able to better utilize that to work for employees. So first goal here, and this, we've actually been doing this for a while now. We just need to be really consistent with it, and that is releasing our monthly newsletter content to employees, and any and all press releases or news releases go to employees first. One of the feedback metrics that we got was, and this was several years back, many years back, actually, is that employees were reading city news in the paper before they heard it at work. And so we wanted to make sure that that was not the case, and that they had the opportunity to hear the information from the source and ask questions and be engaged in the process, and then be good stewards of our information and share that out with their friends and neighbors also. Developing cross-departmental learning opportunities for staff. This is something that we have a great opportunity to do with our wellness team. We also have done some of it with our employee picnic. This picture is actually from our winning trivia team at the employee picnic this year. And these, the people represented in the photo are all from different departments. We did not get to choose our teams. It was all luck of the draw. And we all sat with people, perhaps, that we had never met before, never spoken to before, or had only maybe heard their name once or twice. But it allows us to put some names to faces and understand what other people in other buildings are doing. So introduce employees to one another and to the community. This is something that I really feel strongly about being important, but it's also really difficult with our employees. And the reason I say that is because our employees are true public servants, and they are not in their job for the recognition and, you know, for the kudos out on social media. But we have some really amazing people who work here, and I think it would be great for the community to get to know them and know what they do every day. So I'm hopeful that we can get some participation this year and do some more content with introducing our staff to the community. And finally, our third goal is to be prepared to communicate quickly and accurately in a crisis with crisis communication. And this is just establishing muscle memory with the Crisis Communications Plan. We have done some internal drills and mock press conferences. In fact, we had Jeff from the newsletter and Charles from the radio station come and join us for a mock press conference last year, maybe. And they were able to rapid-fire questions at us when we were going through an emergency scenario ourselves. It was very helpful for our team. That's something that we can just continue to practice on an annual basis so that we are ready. We are in that situation. So in closing, I just want to thank all of you for being so supportive and for allowing me, Jeff especially, to attend this program and be a part of this. It feels like a huge accomplishment and milestone in my career, and I am just thrilled to be able to stand here and share it with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments, council members?
Thanks for going through the program.
Thank you.
Very well done. I'm sure that was a ton of work to go through, but it very clearly did offer you. For the organization as a whole.
I, in the last few, did Bill want to say something?
I just said, thank you, Jenny.
Well, thank you, Bill.
The last few years that I've been on council, I have seen, like she said. The last few years that I've been on council, I have seen, like she said, so many more festivals, so many more people wanting to do things for Rochelle. I love to see city involvement, just like today with Elvis, and there's so many people here from fire and the police. I love the, the questions that are always answered when you put out there, questions for the city, and, and then there's answers. Updates are fabulous, and I just want to thank you for everything that you do. And I have seen, since I've been on here, I have seen different things just continue to grow. So thank you, because communication is key. And I will say, I did read in one of the weaknesses, but I will say, I don't think it's a weakness because we do have a lot of bilingual people that work for the city. But like you said, if you showcase people and you say, we have these people here at RMU, Rose here.
I believe we have someone in every department, if I'm not mistaken. Okay. Very close to that.
No, yes, but I, in there it says is a weakness, but I'm opposing, I'm saying that there is people that are bilingual, so they need to reach out to Rose and say, hey, who do I talk to in this department, et cetera. So thank you for everything, and thank you.
Okay, any other comments, Jeff?
Yeah, just a couple of comments, Your Honor. First of all, I love the purple, that's awesome. And me, yeah. Well, most important, congrats on your graduation, that's a huge honor, I'm very proud of you, you did a great job, okay? And I really preach to my staff this idea of the Athenian oath, which is, and, and it really holds true at the dais. We're all here to make the city better than how we found it, and we don't always agree, but we find ways to compromise, and at the end of the day, we're all here to make the city better. And I think this in part helps with that, and all these wonderful things that, that we're doing at the city is moving us forward. So this plan really pushes that Athenian oath. Just real quick, some comments. So when I first came here, I talked a lot, I mean, when you guys hired me, you said, we want more transparency in governments, and so we started moving in that direction. And, you know, first, the first thing we did is start televising the council meetings. And I remember we started putting a newsletter together, and I was all jazzed because it was like eighty-seven pages long, and quickly realized that nobody's going to read eighty-seven pages. Yeah, I was not, that was a sad day in my life. But, but what it did do is it freed up staff time because they were stressed that they had to come up with all this content. But I also realized by sitting through things like this that, you know, having a newsletter is important, but the way you present it to people is just as important, and how they, you know, so having maybe ten pages or twelve pages, even though I think that's probably still too much. Going through things like this has helped, helped me realize that. Videos, you know, the mayor and I have been talking about us doing more videos. I just, I really think that the city does a good job with transparency. I go to these conferences and I talk to colleagues that follow us on Facebook primarily or LinkedIn, and they really look to see what we're doing, and they, they give us a lot of high fives and kudos and say, the amount of, how, you know, could we always do better? Yes, but how transparent we are with our residents is important, and they like to see us doing that. And, you know, the podcast hasn't, hasn't, hasn't dropped yet, but the podcast I was on a couple of weeks ago talking about mayor and council and manager relations, and how that's so important to the success of the organization, again, a lot of that ties back to this. Love the branding, the social media. Where else, I had a couple other comments. A SWOT analysis, I love that because the only way to make the organization better is to self-assess as often as possible. And one of the things I learned a couple of years ago from a colleague is, success doesn't continue success. The only way if your, your success continues is if you build on your success and your momentum, and you don't, you don't just stand still. And so I love it when we do SWOT analysis, because I think it's important to look at what you're doing right and what you think you can improve. So I really loved reading that through your program. And just, see, I, just finally, the water tower, we came to you folks, and then we put it out on social media, and that, I've never seen so much positivity on our social media than when we painted the tower and then took pictures of it. It was a great initiative, and I hope we do more stuff like that, so congratulations.
Okay, there's certainly not much else I could say, Jenny, other than thank you. You do a great job, and we just have to keep moving forward. All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second to accept the Rochelle Strategic Communications Plan. Roll call when you're ready, Rose.
Councilor Tom McDermott?
Yes.
Councilor Shawdeke?
Yes.
Councilor Artiega?
Yes.
Councilor Valdivieso?
Yes.
Councilor Hayes?
Yes.
Councilor Dan McDermott?
Yes.
And Mayor Barros?
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote seven zero.
Completes our business items. We are going to go into executive session, we'll entertain a motion shortly. When we do come out of executive session, there'll be no action other than return to open session and adjournment. So I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I move the council recess into executive session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, and/or dismissal of specific employees, Section C one.
Motion by Councilmember Ben Valdivieso, is there a second?
Second.
Second by council, second by Councilmember Dan McDermott, I'm sorry, Bill, I missed that.
That's fine.
Roll call when you're ready, Rose.
Councilor Artiega?
Yes.
Councilor Valdivieso?
Yes.
Councilor Hayes? Councilor Dan McDermott?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Tom McDermott?
Yes.
Councilor Shawdeke?
Yes.
And Mayor Barros?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, we are in executive session.
Yes.